Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special meeting of the Pasco City Council. The city thanks you for being a part of our city government. The agendas are available at the back of the room. And as you can see tonight, or maybe you can't, we don't have people here, and we all know the circumstance. But anyway, the packets are available on the city, uh, city of Pasco's website as well. Council requests that you silence your electronic devices during the meeting. Please note, uh, the seating within the city chambers has been reduced as a precautionary measure in an effort to reduce possible transmission of the novel coronavirus. And in addition to that, I just want to note that we have our Clorox wipes here, that we wiped down everything. We've sanitized our hands and using all the precautions necessary, uh, as directed, uh, to keep, to keep from any infection being transmitted anywhere else. So just wanted to note that. There are two, oh, and one more thing I wanted to note is for those who are watching, the Clorox wipes that you use to wipe things down with, please don't flush them down the toilet. Uh, we need to preserve our, uh, our sewer systems and just be careful with that, make sure they go in the garbage. But again, use them wisely and use them frequently, uh, with the situation and environment we're in today. Thank you very much for that. There are, uh, there are two hand sanitizer stations in the back of the chambers, and the bathrooms are located down the hallway on the right side as you exit the council chambers for hand washing purposes. You may watch the city council meeting from the comfort of your home as it is televised live on Spectrum Cable Channel 191 in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. With that, uh, we, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milm.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
And Serrano.
Present.
Everyone's here. All right, thank you. And then we, can we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And thank you for that. Next on the agenda for the special meeting, we go to number three, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings. So first, we're gonna go, uh, to A, and Mr. Dave Zabel, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we went over the COOP, I think, uh, at least a pretty good overview last week. Uh, council's had now a week to review it, and the resolution tonight would adopt a COOP. Uh, we have been operating out of the draft COOP for about two weeks now. Uh, and we would ask or recommend council's, uh, approval by resolution. If there's any questions, uh, Chief Gier is, uh, in attendance virtually, as well as myself, as well as, uh, former deputy chief Dave Harris helping us on this, so we did a lot of work putting it together. But, uh, happy to answer any questions council may have.
Perfect, thank you. So with that. Zara?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question about, um, and I think this is something I may already know the answer to, but just for the record, um, who will be the, the COOP leader?
Uh, the COOP leader, uh, is myself, the city manager, and then, uh, Chief Gier is, is the deputy.
And who will be taking the role of, uh, communications manager?
So that would be, that's John Funfar, and then our section leaders are Recha Sigdel for operations, and then Zach Radkai for, uh, facilities.
Okay, and just for a reminder, this was last updated, uh, in 2015 or 2017?
I believe this is our, I mean, I, I'll defer to Bob, but I, uh, Chief Gier, but I believe this is our, our first continuity operation plan.
That's, that's correct, Councilman Roach. We started working on this, uh, started putting together in 18, uh, before Deputy Chief Hare retired, and then brought him in on, uh, contract on a personal service agreement to finish the plan in 19 after he had retired, uh, because that was one of the goals of the fire department was that done. And we have since, uh, we trained on it a little bit then and tried to tune it up, and now we've brought it into 2020 into real life.
Okay, I guess the reason why I thought that was as I was reading through, um, on page 36, I had seen a, a table that had target hazard, um, critical infrastructure, and it had, you know, a number of schools, Pasco School District Schools, and, and assisted facility livings. And I thought that the, the number of schools seems out of date, and so that's why I was under the impression that this was from, um, a previous year.
It is, because we use the data out of the county, Franklin County's comprehensive emergency management plan to feed into our plan, and we know that it, it's a little behind because they only update that comprehensive emergency management plan every few years.
Thank you. I, I'll let somebody else have a chance of asking some questions. I may have some follow-up in a minute or so.
Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions about the COOP? Uh, I would just, uh, very quickly mention, I'm sorry, is there somebody out there that has a question or a comment? Okay, uh, I, I just wanted to share that on Friday I came in, um, as, uh, part of this, this COOP or continuity of operations, um, and to bring in the other agencies. Are you, you gonna touch on that a little bit?
I, I was, I was gonna do that under, uh, miscellaneous.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll just hold off. Uh, but, but yes, went over the, the continuity of operations. Uh, I got to see it, uh, work, uh, firsthand last Friday, and it's pretty amazing. Um, the, the work that went into this and the, um, the way everybody's cooperating and bringing in a lot of different agencies to, uh, to get updates, uh, it, it's just an amazing plan. But I'll just let Dave, uh, uh, talk more, a little bit, more about that a little bit later, but I'm good with this. Anybody else have any comments on the continuity of operations? If not?
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I just wanted to ask one other general question about, uh, being in coordination with Emergency Operations Center, and, um, if that's in effect, and at what, at what time that took effect?
Well, Franklin County put their, uh, the ECC Emergency Coordination Center up to partial activation probably Wednesday of last week. Uh, their role is still pretty minimal, um, other than we're working on what we call receiving and distribution, because we know we're gonna get a push from the federal stockpile this week. Uh, and it's been agreed that that's gonna show up at, um, our facility, Councilwoman, Woman Roach, which you, you toured through, and we have that large bay there. So both Benton and Franklin Counties, uh, federal stockpile push will come in there, uh, get inventoried, and then allocated based on a distribution by the Health Department. Uh, and then also the, uh, donation center that's been established at Visit Tri-Cities. Uh, all that material that comes to that donation center will then be moved back to, uh, that facility, what we're calling the R and D, uh, reception and distribution center, yeah, inventoried, and then again pushed out based on the priorities dealt by the, or determined by the Health Department. So, uh, the emergency management agencies right now are primarily involved with, uh, ordering of, uh, the federal stockpile supplies and the push of those, uh, to Benton and Franklin County, and the volunteer or the, uh, donation effort that's going on, and dropping off supplies at the, uh, Visitor and Convention Bureau, and getting those moved over to that, to our facility where we'll, uh, inventory and then distribute.
Thank you for that answer, and I did really appreciate getting that tour, uh, a couple of weeks ago when I was there, Chief Gier. Um, being able to see and hear from you about those plans in detail. Um, I'm good for now, thank you.
And I'll just note, you can, you can tell our, our deputy COOP, uh, manager is very much wired into all that's happening, uh, across the region. And it is a high level of expertise of that, and a lot of connections, and working, uh, in these kind of partnerships is nothing new for Chief Gier.
Okay. Uh, if there's no further comments, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 3947, adopting the continuity of operations and continuity of government plan in response to the COVID-19 emergency.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second? A second by Mr. Milm? So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Is it, is this just appropriate way, even though they're not speaker, everybody can say aye, correct?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you, and we'll move right on to, uh, 3B, resolutions, approval of four emergency order related to COVID-19. Mr. Manager, Mr. David?
Well, thank you again, Mayor and Council. As, as you're aware of from your packet, uh, and we shared last week, under the emergency, uh, declaration, there are gonna be times where, uh, our regular procedures have to take a, a bit of a, a backseat to what's, what's needed, and, uh, in those cases, the mayor will, uh, staff will evaluate and make a recommendation to the, recommendation to the mayor. Mayor will sign a emergency order if he agrees with that. And then our next regular meeting opportunity, uh, excuse me, our next opportunity for council to do so, council will consider ratification of that order. So those orders are currently in effect. And we have four orders that, uh, we, uh, recommended the mayor, and he's declared, he's ordered, and, uh, asking for your ratification on that. The first one, uh, had to do a temporary sign usage, and this basically was a pretty minor, um, amendment that would allow our restaurants that are trying to, uh, provide food for our residents and businesses out there, uh, on a takeout basis in compliance with the governor's order to, uh, put out, uh, signs, meeting a, meeting a, uh, standard prepared by, uh, the Community and Economic Development Department, uh, that would allow to, them to indicate to the public that, um, they're available, uh, for takeout. That's essentially what the signs are, are saying. I think the, uh, two, yeah, there's an A sign, uh, what do we call that?
Oh, the push-in.
A sign.
Yeah.
Sandwich, excuse me, I could, metal block. Sandwich Forge sign, ironically. Yeah, or, uh, one that's a kind of a push-in that looks like a political, uh, sign. And then if you have a monument sign, and like you're in a shopping center, like some of our restaurants, and, and there's a monument sign out front, you could, uh, affix it to that monument sign, provided that the, the sign did not exceed the dimension of the monument side, so. Those that were asking council for approval of that resolution, did you want to just go through these or consider them one at a time?
Well, it.
Or go through all four, or consider them one at a time?
Let's, let's just do one at a time.
Okay.
So with that said, I also want to make a comment. I've been working with the city manager, uh, most of last week to go over these, um, and I appreciate the council, uh, also going through them. Uh, shout out to, um, Mr. Maloney for catching, uh, the eagle's eye on some mi- minor issues that he was able to catch for us. So thank you for that, Councilmember Maloney. And, uh, so with that said, uh, we'll work on the first one. Entertaining motion, please?
First motion, I move to approve resolution number 3948, ratifying emergency order number 2020 dash 001 relating to temporary sign usage within the Pasco Municipal Code.
Uh, there's a motion, and Mr. Milm seconded. Is there any other comments? I want to give everybody an opportunity if they would like to say anything.
Mr. Mayor, this is Craig Maloney. You guys, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Councilmember.
Thank you very much. Um, the only question I wanted to ask was a structural one. Um, so on these, I have no issue with any of these, but if I understand the process correctly, we, um, these go into effect, and then if it's not ratified by the council, then they just simply discontinue. Is that a correct procedure for this?
That is, uh, let's see, City Eric Ferguson or City Attorney will answer that question.
Excuse me, yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, that's exactly how the process is laid out in our code, so that the mayor can issue these orders and they take effect immediately. But at the next regular or special meeting, uh, they have to be ratified, or, uh, they are, uh, that'd be, uh, I guess, uh, the exact language is, uh, accepted and rejected, uh, or then it becomes, uh, obviously, uh, if it goes past that meeting, even if it was tabled, it would still be a, uh, no longer a valid order, so it would have to be passed at the next regular or special meeting.
Great, thank you. I just, I want to make sure I understood the process. Um, again, I have no, no particular questions about these ones. I'm glad to see them. I think they're all prudent, and, um, I'm glad we're, they're in effect already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. So there's been a motion that's been seconded. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, the next motion, uh, talks about the, um, uh, temporary moratorium on utility services, shut offs, and late fees, uh, for the city of Pasco customers. Mr. Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor, and so this would, um, relates, relates to provisions of Pasco Municipal Code 2.55.020H, and any other provisions of the municipal code as they relate to shut offs, restoration of operations, and, uh, utility services, basically suspending those provisions. So this, essentially what it does is, is takes our late fees off, takes our suspension off, uh, and that's tied to the lifting of the, uh, proclamation, uh, by the governor. Once, once the governor's proclamation is lifted in terms of restaurants being open, business being opened, and we, you know, of course, listen to the governor tonight, it's actually been extended for a couple of weeks. And so, uh, instead of being eight, nine days from now, it's, we're a good two weeks from now before that, that first opportunity for that to happen.
Okay. All right.
This gives staff some flexibility to work with customers on, on, uh, payment, payment plans and, and things like that, and some, and, uh, and it gives our, uh, residents as well as our businesses some flexibility.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Any comments from council? If none, Miss Natch?
Second motion, I move to approve resolution number 3949, ratifying emergency order number 2020 dash 002 relating to the temporary moratorium of utility, on utility services, shut offs, and late fees for Pas-, for city of Pasco customers.
I'll second. Ruben Alvarado.
It has been, uh, a motion and seconded by Ruben Alvarado. If there's no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The third motion, uh, this, uh, talks about the, uh, temporary city of Pasco facility closure. Mr. Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, uh, 2020 dash 03, and it relates to all city park shelters, bathrooms, cemetery offices, city hall, fire administration building, fire stations, First Avenue Center, MLK Center, Pasco Police Community Services Building, and Pasco, um, Public Works Operations and Plants, as, as well as City Hall. This is probably something we will never see again, and it's the first time we've seen it ever, for most of us, but, uh, we're having to close all of our facilities to, uh, the public, uh, except on a limited basis. Matter of fact, the public would be welcome at this meeting, uh, per the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, we don't have any that chose to come here tonight, but, uh, the meeting, the meeting room is open to the public, and, uh, as, as well as certainly broadcasting, but, uh, this would, uh, close those facilities, for 60 days unless terminated by a separate written order.
Okay. Any, um, comments by the council? You know, this is, uh.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Maloney. Um, I just wanted to say that I took a walk on Saturday with my family, um, keeping a proper distance from everyone, but I certainly noticed a lot of folks in the park that were, were not. Um, and I, I know that the governor just issued an order which I think will hopefully help to that effect, but I think that our, our park facilities, even though our, our actual buildings are closed, we're seeing, still seeing a lot of people congregate to play basketball, um, being on some of the playground equipment and such. Um, I know this, this current emergency order doesn't take care of that. Is that something that's going to be considered for a future order coming up very soon, um, in conjunction with the governor's order, or is the governor's order sufficient?
You know, the city attorney probably could weigh in on the sufficiency of the governor's order. I mean, it did, it did just come out, and I don't know that we've seen anything in writing yet, so maybe Eric, you could weigh in.
Sure. Yeah, so, uh, I, I just watched the broadcast. I haven't seen the order yet, uh, but it sounds like, uh, it will definitely cover, uh, the scenario that you just mentioned, Councilman Maloney. Uh, and, uh, we, uh, we could certainly do that, uh, locally, uh, to kind of, I guess, reiterate that point and, and really bring that home. Um, it would, uh, i- if there was any type of criminal enforcement, uh, we wouldn't need a local order to be able to do that, but, uh, obviously, that's the least best option, uh, by long stretch. But, uh, yeah, we could certainly, uh, do something local to, uh, to kind of reiterate that point, but it sounds like that is exactly what the governor made clear.
Thank you. I appreciate that, uh, that additional information. Um, I just may make the recommendation that we look at seeing what physical barriers we can put in place. Obviously, I don't want, uh, police officers standing in our parks chasing kids away. Um, but perhaps some of those facilities that are being used could be, um, physically prevented from being able to be used, uh, just as a, as a thought in conjunction with this closing of, of city facilities. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I just wanted to make a comment about this same issue. Uh, we went to our local elementary school, um, to pick up, uh, homework for my kids, and as we went by, we stopped at Vintage Park, which is directly to the south of the school. Um, and there was signage there from City of Pasco about parks and playgrounds not being germ-free, and then some guidelines from the CDC as to how to conduct yourself with social distancing, physical distancing. Um, but I did notice that there were people using the, were not, were not any children on the jungle gym, but they were using the pathway to ride their bikes. Uh, there were people in the grass, picnicking, and so they were using it in a, in an appropriate manner. Um, but I thought that the signage was, was good to have that there as a reminder. Um, I think people are still going to, you know, break the rules and, and do that. Um, but if we cover our bases on our end as a city in informing them with some sort of signage that it is not an appropriate time to be playing on jungle gyms, um, that, that would be helpful. Um, and this was very, it just looked like some plywood with a piece of paper taped on top of it, so, um, very makeshift kind of signage, nothing expensive. And, and that's all of that.
If I, if I could respond to that, uh, we, yeah, we did want to get something out because we had, had, uh, reports from, uh, community members that, uh, a lot of folks were using that type of equipment, and so we wanted to get some inform, information out there onsite so that parents could take a look at that before they, you know, and took those things into consideration. We, we were to the point, uh, last week when those went up as to whether or not parks would close, and, and I think all of us have been kind of waiting for the governor's, uh, uh, talk today, and we'll be looking at his written, uh, order over the weekend and maybe back, uh, further refining, uh, closure of some facilities, uh, next week.
Thank you for that, Mr. Zabel. Uh, I also want to chime in on that. Yeah, as Mr. Zabel had indicated, we had, uh, several or a couple of community members concerned about that, that very reason, and, uh, appreciate the signs, you know, at least the attempt to make the signs go out. Um, but yes, after today's, um, proclamation, uh, from the governor, I, I don't know how more clear, uh, he could have put it. He said for, and he even mentioned some of those activities that Mr. Maloney had mentioned about playing basketball together. You know, for a couple of weeks or maybe even longer, uh, life's gonna be a little different. And, um, we, we as leaders of this city and the leaders of our state don't want it to get to that point where we have to use, uh, any type of criminal or any type of force to get people to do the right thing. Uh, we're gonna depend on each other, on communities, uh, community members to politely just advise, uh, at this point, but hopefully with this announcement, that it's, it's as clear, uh, as it can be in my eyes, and hopefully that, um, our community members will adhere to these, uh, these orders from the, from the governor. Cause, cause we as a city, I think we can all say we're very much in line with what has to be done, and we need to beat this, and, and the sooner the better. And the, and the, the better we are up front, the quicker we can get through there, so that's, that's my comment. Anybody else? Okay, if not, then I entertain the motion?
Motion number three, I move to approve resolution number 3950, ratifying emergency order number 2020 dash 003 relating to temporary city of Pasco facilities closures.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Serrano?
It's seconded by Mr. Serrano. Okay, if there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And now the fourth, uh, the fourth motion, uh, talks, uh, about relating to a temporary expansion of the administrative paid leave for city of Pasco staff. Mr. Zabel?
Thank you again, Mayor. So this, this would just authorize, uh, uh, city manager a little bit more authority on, on the use of, uh, administrative leave, and primarily it's gonna be used to kind of sort out the sta-, there, there are just so many different scenarios that, uh, our employees could be in, you know, whether they are sick, whether they are COVID positive or presumptive positive, or taking care of a family member. And there's different benefits coming down from the federal government, the state. Uh, there's unemployment, you know, potentially, if, if you don't have a whole lot of leave time, those kind of things, and you're gonna be out for a long time. There's a number of, um, avenues that we could look at, and we want to, we need to, sometimes we're gonna need a day or two, maybe three, to, to work with our employees to, to, uh, uh, figure out with them the best route they can take. I mean, uh, there's a new, uh, new amendment to the, uh, Family Medical Leave Act that we're, we're working through right now that would provide additional benefits for a certain period of time under FMLA. So just, it's, it's fairly complicated, and, uh, we, we need a little time to get our folks on the right path without them worrying about, particularly the ones that maybe haven't worked here long enough to, um, to have a lot of sick leave built up, or that maybe have, uh, are recovering from an injury where they had to use a lot of their sick leave or other medical condition. We want to have some flexibility where that's not a source of angst for them while we try to get them on a path that'll keep them, uh, financially, uh, secure during their, their time in need.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the council? If there's no comments, you entertain a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 3951, ratifying emergency order number 2020 dash 004 relating to temporary expansion of the administrative paid leave for city of Pasco staff.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second? And seconded by Mr. Milm? Okay, if there's no other comments, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign? All right, passes unanimously. Well, thank you very much, council, for that, and Mr. Zabel, thank you for, uh, explaining each one of those. Um, I know it's been a lot of work to get these put together, and appreciate all the time and effort, uh, that, that was put into this. Thank you very much. With that, uh, we'll go to number four, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel?
So I did have a few items, and as I, I promised last week, I wanted to give, uh, council a bit of an update as some of our activities and. council a bit of an update as some of our activities and probably the best thing to go over would be our continuity of operations situation report. I did email it out to council. I think on Friday or it might have been this morning. It's been a lot of emails, so. But just to kind of walk through for the benefit of the public, the objectives for the COOP, our our Continuative Operations Plan team is protect the health and well-being of citizens and employees of Pasco by implementing precautionary measures as determined by state and local health officials when appropriate. Number two, identify, prioritize, and maintain critical public services for the City of Pasco within its capabilities. Number three, maintain and communicate local, regional, and state situational awareness of COVID nineteen crisis. And number four, work collaboratively with other community services agencies and the public to minimize potential effects of COVID nineteen. Number five, maintain fiscal responsibility and monitor incident costs. And number six, work within our sphere of influence to solve problems for local businesses while under the emergency declaration, which the sign code variance was one of those. So some of the things that we've been able to accomplish this this first full week of our our activation was we developed, obviously, we developed the objectives we just went over, the emergency proclamation for council, and of course, the emergency orders that we considered tonight. We identified the and established COOP organizational structure and priorities based on our based on the COOP plan that council adopted tonight. We identified and prioritized operational needs and facility needs. We're we're remote working procedures, telecommuting. We have a policy we'll be putting together on that, finalizing this week. Up updated facilities, maintenance, particularly sanitation. And I wanted to assure council members that walked in here tonight, this every time this room is used, we go through a sanitation routine to where all the touch points were, where my hand is on this lectern and and where your hands are and microphones, the whole works. So that we we can walk into this room or other places in the building with a pretty high level of confidence that it's a safe place to be. I don't and I give Zach and his crew a lot of credit for that. Identified and, excuse me, identified, prioritized, and implemented facilities vehicle contamination processes. And I think one of the big challenges was our ambulances because we we haul patients that, you know, are showing symptoms of the COVID nineteen virus. They may or may not have been evaluated at at this point or determined to be positive. But we need to go through and we haul a patient like that, we need to go through a decontamination process. So we don't pass it on to the next person that's in there or the paramedics that are working in the back of the ambulance. So we we have a, I think, a pretty decent system set up now to where different levels might be done by staff, paramedics, or it may may be a much deeper cleaning that goes down to our public works facility where we have a third party contractor that specializes in that biohazard cleanup, working that issue. So these things, they're going to cost us money, but we need to really protect our employees. We need to protect the public that's in our ambulances. Established cost code for COVID nineteen expenditures, purchases, and potential reimbursement for potential reimbursement tracking purposes. We, you know, we're we're pretty confident that at least some of the costs are going to be reimbursed through FEMA or some other source, and we want to make sure we're capturing those accurately and getting as much dollars as we're spending on this issue as as we can. And identify and continue to work through employee HR benefits regarding COVID nineteen. We talked a little bit about that tonight with the admin leave. And and so we'll be working out, continuing to work on those things, plus getting up to speed and getting our our staff up to speed on what's coming down from the federal government or state government along those lines. And then identify the need to provide employee training specific to COVID nineteen, which that kind of goes into some of our open task, just in time training programs. And one of the things we did last week, we were able to reach out and touch through a go-to meeting technology that we're using tonight. I think we had a hundred and five employees in that meeting, which when you consider a lot of them work work at night or different shifts or things like that, we could we caught a good number of our daytime staff with information about COVID nineteen, about how the city's responding, about this plan. And I think that was helpful for them. We've gone through an exercise of priority prioritizing city services. As I mentioned last week, we we're going to find ourselves potentially, if you if you look at what folks are telling us about trends, with fewer and fewer staff and to the point where some things we aren't going to be able to do that we're that we're able to do under normal circumstances. And it may be like, like, say, signs, you know, we we may we may not be replacing a no parking sign, but we're we're going to prioritize a stop sign that goes down. You know, we may not may not be able to respond to certain types of calls, but we're going to be able to respond to nine one one calls for for emergencies. But it may take us a few days to look at, for instance, a code enforcement issue might take a few weeks. You know, yeah, we we have a couple other issues we talked about in the emergency orders tonight that, for instance, on the billing side, those those were setting off as a priority from our normal operations. That that gives us a little bit of space. We've already set aside recreation programs, for instance, recreation programs. Governor would have set them aside anyway, but we already set those aside about a week and a half ago, knowing that we didn't, it wasn't a good idea to have those kind of crowds together and so forth. And so those employees have actually been repurposed. A number of them are helping on utility billing and being trained to help along those lines. Develop and fine tune remote meeting capabilities. I think we've come a long way since last week. I hope hope the folks online that that worked through last week feel the same way. And then identify management action points and alternatives regarding facilities and personnel and develop reporting and monitoring processes for absent employee absences. So one of the things we want to do is we keep a pretty close, close eye on our workforce. Not not so much attendance as availability. And as as folks get either sick or taking care of sick folks, you know, we 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 need to kind of know what kind of resource we have so we can continue to refine and prioritize the highest level services the city provides. And and we may need to shift folks like we did with recreation from one area to another. Future considerations, and actually, these are, it's actually a current consideration because this is this is a few days old, but working collaboratively with city county partners, Benton Franklin Health District, FCEM. We did have Friday was our what's called a collaborator meeting. And so at that meeting, we had in attendance. Port of Pasco was able to make that meeting, and Franklin County Emergency Management was at that meeting. Others were invited, but we're pulling this stuff together like I was feeling and a lot of others were feeling a week or two ago. Our calendar has had a pretty regular schedule, and this is kind of overtaking it. But there was that kind of middle part where you're having to fit everything all in to however many hours you can fit it into. I think we had a couple of agencies that they had a lot going on in their agency, weren't able to make it. But we anticipate Pasco School District and PUD and other community partners being with that. On the part about working with other city and county partners, I did want to mention we've we have a regular meeting, a regular phone meeting scheduled between the city managers. I was unable to make the one today, but we've we've been trying to do this about every other day just to kind of keep each other up to date on what's going on. The three cities, for instance, work together on the signing issue with the playground equipment. You know, we all kind of recognize that was an issue and had heard comments from citizens and and worked together to kind of come up with a solution on that one. And then identify and establish management action points for non-critical city business as well as for critical for critical and non-critical city business. So we're working through a lot of things right now. We continue to. We don't have all the answers. Governor's given us a lot to chew on tonight as well. We'll be probably spending part of the evening tonight and a good chunk tomorrow kind of parsing through. Hopefully, the his written order will come out this evening, if it isn't already out while we've been talking. And that'll keep us busy working through that and and determining how we react to those those orders. And with that, I want to turn it over to Chief Gere, if he wanted to add anything to to the COOP discussions or former Deputy Chief Herr, who's also online.
No, I think, David, you covered most of that. I think, again, I feel that we're doing a good job. I feel the city is is leaning forward, which is important in in the issues that are coming up. I'm really, it's been a great opportunity for us to learn how to react to something like this. It's it's not a great time for the nation. It's not a great time for the state and the county. But everyone's going to come out of this a lot stronger and have a lot more capability than we've ever had to to deal with stuff. I I just, again, I'm really happy with the with where the city's at. And and I've had a lot of years of experience in bad situations, and I think we're doing okay, given what's going on right now.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I got to see again firsthand on this continuity of operations meeting we had in collaboration. And yeah, it's a it's a great thing. And want to give a little shout out to our communications group for this this whole go-to meeting program and the ability that it gives us to do what we're doing tonight. It's pretty amazing. I, you know, I've been on the council for ten years and never and and a school board for many years and never seen anything like this. So it's just amazing how it's all coming together and how everybody's doing their part to to get it accomplished. So thank you very much for that, staff and and John Funfar and his and his organization. Anybody else have anything they want to share?
I'll I'll note that we are spending money to make it happen, but it but it needs to happen.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, Mr. Zabel. And let's see. So there is, at this point, no need for an executive session tonight.
Not this.
Not this special meeting. So with that, we are gonna adjourn this special meeting. So if there's no other comments, this special meeting is adjourned. And we'll move right on to our regular meeting, regular workshop meeting, where we've already performed the pledge of allegiance and and shared with everybody the details of the meeting. And we'll go right on over to verbal reports from council members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share that they've done last week or anything that you think is significant?
I do, Alvarado.
Okay, Mr. Alvarado.
Uh, yeah, just a quick update. As probably a lot of our boards and committees are getting canceled. I do chair the Good Roads Association, and I did go ahead and cancel that meeting until further notice. Also, today we met over the phone very much like this to talk about very similar very similar resolutions that we need to make at Benton Franklin Transit. And so we approved a declaration as well as some employee, how we're going to take care of our employees. And so I want to report on that.
Okay, Ruben, I I guess I don't know if you would know at this point. I don't know if we could get help from staff, but well, maybe I should wait, but I I thought I heard the governor say something about no more public transit. Is that is that a false statement? Well, anyway, or at at least to to minimize it if possible.
Public transfer, I think, is considered a essential.
Okay.
And so it it is continuing. But there there's, as I'm sure you may have heard, there there are no fares being taken at this point to minimize the contact of exchange of money and things of that nature. Also, people are being seated from the rear entrance and asked to keep distance. And buses are not necessarily very very crowded at this point, but they are, you know, they are being used by folks who really need to use them to get to places.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, for that clarification and that information. We'll hear more about that to come as well. Anybody else? Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll move right on to item four, items for discussion. Talk about issuance of the two thousand twenty revenue bond and refunding of previous bonds. Mrs. Sigdahl, you have a report for us.
Yes, thank you evening. Thank you, council and evening. What you have in front of you is a topic that we had discussed about a couple of weeks ago, and a lot have changed since. But the issuance of the bond is still on schedule, if you all approve. What you have in front of you is schedules that you've seen before, a description of all of the projects and the maximum amount that we are funding with this bond issuance. But also, a new piece of information is a hefty bond ordinance that is quite thick. But essentially, what it allows for is for the city manager to sell the bond within certain parameters that the council would approve. And the parameters are usually set on three different topics. One is the amount, which for this one is twenty five point five million dollars. However, only sixteen point three of million of that twenty five million is actually new debt. Because we would also like to utilize the the current market factors, and I will put an asterisk to that because it's doing some interesting things, very much reflecting the current environment that we're living in right now. And we would be refunding that nine million dollars of existing bond if the market factors are good. So the interest rates, so that's the amount, twenty five point five million dollars would be the maximum. And the there's two other factors in terms of rates. One is a coupon rate. Usually, the bonds are sold in many different sections, and those are mostly related to how far out they are. So a bond rate or a coupon rate at the end of a bond would be much higher because you never know what's going to happen to the city thirty years from now. So they price that rate a little bit higher than they would for something that is nearer in timeframe. The other part is called the true interest rate, and that is essentially an aggregate of all of the rates. And we are coming to you with a proposal of two point five million dollars in the total bond amount, which is sixteen point three for new debt and then nine point two for the refunding of the existing debt and six point two five in interest rate for both the total aggregate interest and the and the highest amount of coupon rate. That doesn't mean that we would issue the bond at that interest rate or that or at that amount. You're just setting the ceiling. And if you look at the schedule that you have in front of you, this schedule was created back in February, and the plan was to sell the bond at the end of April. And so we're still on that schedule if you'd like to move forward with it. But what we would do is, once we're ready to go and we've had, we go through quite an extensive process with the rating agencies, with our underwriters and bond counsel. And when we find the right time to sell, then we will we would sell it. And the maximum interest rate that we would be authorized would be six point two five percent. And, you know, given council's recent experience, that might feel a little bit too high. But we've had historically really, really low interest rates. And usually, when there's a market fluctuation down or market crash almost, usually people flock to municipal markets because this is the safest investment there is. However, with with such an up and down in such a short period and given how this is something that we as a nation have not faced before, people are also holding on to their money. So once there's more of a stimulus package and and we're able to beat this thing, we really expect a lot of people to flock into. we really expect a lot of people to flock into the municipal bond market again and be able to get a lower interest rate. That is all I have. If you have any questions.
Any questions from council?
I've got a question. This is Serrano.
Go ahead, Councilman Serrano.
So, so Mrs. Sigdahl, the bonds we're looking at refinancing, where are those in relation to 6.25%?
They are lower right now. When we issued them in 2009 and 10, I want to say the interest rate was closer to 4.5 and 4.75. So unless we got something less than that and there was a cost benefit to us for with the issuance cost and everything, we would not refund those bonds.
Okay, that's kind of what I wanted to make sure is that we were skinning all the right cat.
Yeah.
So to say. All right, thank you.
So is this something that would be put on next week's meeting for a vote? And then you would fluctuate or not fluctuate, but you would wait till the proper timing to do this, is that correct?
That is correct. So the ordinance would come to you next week.
Okay.
And you would pass the ordinance and ordinance would basically give you all of the details of the bond, but also those parameters. And you would be authorizing the city manager to take action on it.
Okay, all right.
For when the time comes.
Okay, there's no further discussion? Perfect, well, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
You can put it on next week's agenda and then we go from there.
We'll do, thank you.
Looking forward to it. And yes, it is kind of a surprise to see that number as high as it is, but under the circumstances, I understand. And hopefully we could catch it at a good time. Right, thank you for that. Next on the agenda is tourism promotion area reserve fund request. Mr. Zabel, do we, do we have Mr. Novakovich on the phone?
I think Mr. Novakovich is on the phone and it will be really interesting.
I am here.
Michael, good evening. It'll be interesting to see how he does this over the phone. Because we all know what an energetic presenter he is.
I'm not sure how he's gonna entertain us over the phone. It's gonna be exciting, Mr. Novakovich.
I'm ready if you are. I sure appreciate the opportunity, Mayor Martinez, council members and city staff. I will do my best to entertain virtually. So thank you for this opportunity to present our 2019 annual report. If you click forward, hopefully you're looking at a slide that says items for discussion. We'll be talking about the state of the tourism industry last year. I do want to highlight where we're at today, particularly amidst this COVID-19 health crisis. Our 2020 work plan is on the list of discussion items here. And then finally, our TPA reserve request for your approval. If we click forward a slide, you should be looking at why tourism matters. And the answer to that question is last year, visitor spending in our community was over half a billion dollars. $560 million walked into our community in the pocket of visitors as they stayed in our hotels, went out and ate in our restaurants, took in our attractions, purchased from our retail pump gas, bought groceries. That infusion of cash supported nearly 6,400 jobs. This is great news for you and I. We have a greater opportunity for the businesses we enjoy to keep their doors open. It's also a great opportunity for economic development as we're able to attract a new business when we have a healthy business climate. Those same visitors generated a significant amount of tax revenue, $54.5 million in state and local tax receipts collected here in the Tri-Cities with $19.3 million retained locally. More great news is it's lowering your and my tax burden. And all those tax dollars help to fund things like teachers and schools and police and fire and the maintenance of our roads, the beautifications of our parks and so much more. So when we look at the big picture of this tourism economy, it's helping to fund educated communities and safe communities and beautiful communities filled with many, many amenities for all of us to enjoy, all unemployed communities too. So not a bad deal at all. So that was the state of affairs in 2019. If you fast forward to here, we are sitting in the latter half of March amongst the COVID crisis. And you may have noticed if you passed by any of our hotel parking lots that they're nearly empty if not empty. And unfortunately, this has had significant impacts and tourism's been at the tip of the spear. As we've seen, you know, air travel, of course, decreased significantly. Locally, we've had several hotel properties close their doors and lay off many, many employees. We know our restaurants are feeling the pinch and retail as well and many layoffs happening. And visit Tri-Cities is not immune to this. I am regrettably, I must inform you that today we laid off a number of our employees as visitor traffic has slowed. But our team does remain active as our sales and our sales teams that work on conventions, meetings and sports sell futures. So while we don't have the leisure travelers coming into our community and the business travelers aren't coming in like they normally do, our teams, our sales teams work one to five years in advance. So we're still able to book future business, which is good news. One of the things that we've done is turned our attention towards the community. So when we normally market outside of our community to bring visitors in for overnight visitation and driving all that economic impact, that message, of course, isn't prudent at the moment. But we can and we are encourage our community to go out there and support local business. A lot of people thinking outside the box, offering curbside solutions or new products, means of product delivery. And we've been partnering with the Tri-City Regional Chamber of Commerce and TRIDEC to highlight all these businesses doing these wonderful things under a campaign called Open for Business. I think it's on Wednesday, we have a commercial we went out and shot on Friday that's gonna be airing. We even have a cameo from General Mattis. He shows up at Bucknut, so you'll be, you'll want to watch for that. We're pretty excited about it. We've also been thinking outside the box. Annually, we go to Olympia and do what's called a sales blitz, where we work with many, many Washington State associations to bring their business back here to the Tri-Cities. That event was to take place last week. On Wednesday, we had all these sales appointments. Well, we didn't travel there, but what we did is kept all those appointments remotely. We did, much like you're doing tonight, we did these virtual meetings. And then what we did on Thursday, we typically host a thank you luncheon for them. We bring in a speaker, we provide them with lunch. And then we also tell them about the amenities and the infrastructure of the Tri-Cities. Well, we did a live broadcast from the Becca Boardroom. We saved our speaker who was gonna join us in Olympia for a return trip in, oh, it's gonna be this fall. And I gave a presentation on making vitality your reality. I wish you would have been there to see it. I think I did okay. But our team did have an opportunity to tout all the amenities of the Tri-Cities. And what we did is we worked with a provider much like Uber Eats to deliver meals to all of these event planners that were watching this remotely throughout Olympia and in the Puget Sound. And it was very, very well received. So we're thinking outside the box, working to make lemonade. If you would advance the slides, we should be looking at Tri-City guestrooms sold. You'll notice there was, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, a slight increase in the number of guestrooms sold last year. If you look at Pasco, there was actually a decrease compared to the overall market and the number of guestrooms sold. There was a property, and I believe it was the Best Western, that was under renovation first quarter of last year. And I believe it was about 100 rooms that were offline. So I think that had impact there. We had also been working with city staff at the end of the year to better understand if maybe through some change of ownership, if there was reporting issues. We didn't discover any, but that seems to be a little suspect. However, we're expecting with the new property there at the airport and once things kick back into gear, the Pasco is gonna be in great shape. If you advance this slide, you should be looking at the hotel guestrooms available. These numbers you're looking at here are lodging taxes. And you'll notice, while it was a good year in Pasco, not as strong as last year, but that's a reflection of those guestrooms sold. If you wouldn't mind advancing the slide again, conventions and sports. I'm gonna breeze past these just because I did spend some time talking about COVID. But you'll see that we work into the future and we have estimated future visitor spending at $48.3 million. That's business that we've already secured. And if you advance the slide, you should be looking at media outreach. Be talking a little bit about some of the work we do with media outreach as we get to the TPA reserve request. And if you advance again, you should be looking at digital and social media marketing. We have a strong presence here and we get great traction off of our digital endeavors. If you advance again, OTT and traditional broadcast. OTT is advertising, we deliver for those people that stream content. So we're doing more and more of that, operating in the digital space. And we can better put a finer point and target those individuals who are watching content, delivering relevant messaging. If you advance one more time, you can see some of our printed products are always very, very popular. And if you advance one more time, hopefully you're looking at the work plan for 2020. Lot of fine detail there. What I thought I would do is spend the next 20 minutes covering this front and back, going line by line, if you're ready for that.
No, that's okay.
And of course, I'm only kidding. We are gonna advance this one more slide, but I will tell you that that just gets into the nuts and bolts of what we do. So here we are, hopefully you're looking at the TPA reserves available. So funds available at $740,000 and change. Previously approved projects are a little over $300,000. So these are projects that come before council before. They don't have an expiration date, they're projects that we're currently working on. So that leaves us with funds available for reinvestment, a little over $428,000. I should note, we also, aside from these dollars here, we keep half a million dollars of TPA reserves kind of tucked away as a rainy day fund for situations just like this COVID crisis. We're not currently planning to tap into those. We're managing our expenses and as mentioned, reduction workforce temporarily until we can get back in front of this thing and see people populating our hotels. So if you advance the slide one more time, you should be looking at the different reserve requests that total almost $418,000. What I'd like to do is just highlight a few of these, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Starting at the top, T-BEX 2021 Conference. What that is, it's the Travel Bloggers Exchange. It's held once annually in North America, once in Europe annually, and then about every other year in Pacific Asia. It brings 450 to 800 content creators, travel writers, bloggers into a community for a conference. It's an incredible amount of content creators all in one place. We're bidding, I would like to bid on this for 2021. What they do is they start writing about the destination they're coming to once it's awarded, so a year in advance. They show up about a week before the conference and do familiarization tours where we give them Tri-Cities experiences and they create content then. They go out and have experiences during the conference where they continue to create content. Following the conference for about a week, they're in the community and throughout Washington State, or they would be, creating content. And then they continue to write about destinations one to two years after they leave. It's about five to 20 years worth of content creation in one fell swoop, so really significant. That next line item there, Ironman Event Support, that is exactly what you suspect it might be. It's the Ironman Triathlon, massive event that infuses $4 to $7 million into a local economy by bringing 5,000 spectators and 2,000 event participants into the community. A significant lift to pull an event like that off, but pretty exciting endeavor. This would be for 2021 too as well. So both of these events would be helping with business recovery endeavors. And then finally, that contract staff position, the third person down, our third item down, is to support the T-BEX Conference, getting and soliciting sponsorships for that as well as for Ironman and helping with event logistics. Just a couple other items of note, new marketing advertising for Chicago. We work with the Tri-Cities Airport to market flights. And our intent here would be to market that Chicago flight. And on that flight, we'd like to bring out five travel writers from Chicago, hopefully on the inaugural flight, for a Tri-Cities familiarization tour where they come out and have an experience, go back to Chicago, write about us and work to increase demand for that flight, but also pack our hotel rooms and drive economic impact. And then finally, if you look at the very last item on that list, media outreach. Those familiarization tours are so impactful. And this would allow us to bring additional writers into our communities to have specific experiences. And they go out and write about us in places like SIP Magazine, Sunset Magazine, USA Today, New York Times. Or you're probably familiar in the not-too-distant past, CNN dubbed the Tri-Cities the new West Coast wine country. And that was a direct result of one of my team bringing that travel writer into our community. So all told, about $418,000 worth of TPA reserve request for your consideration and approval. And at that, if you click to the next slide, I want to thank you for your time and your continued support. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, well, thank you for that report. Always exciting, understanding the situation we're in now. But any council members have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Craig Maloney, I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Novakovich, my, I see a lot of optimism in you, of course, and that is perfect for the job you do. However, I noticed some of the items in that list were for things in 2020. Understanding that in large part, what you are doing, building future demand as opposed to, you know, reacting to present circumstances, there's a lot of projections out there. This is, there's gonna be some effects of this for quite some time. I'm concerned that your projected spending on some of these is overly optimistic. Can you talk at all about that, your thought process on how you and your team and the advisory board have reviewed, really thought about these things?
Sure, sure. So this is, the one thing in here that's really outside of Chicago that is a, an event that, or in a situation that would take place this year, and of course, these decisions were made before we were impacted by this healthcare crisis, would be the Opportunity Fund. So just a review of what that is. When an event books business in the Tri-Cities, it's almost like a grant where if they bring in X number of rooms, they get $5 per occupied room. It's kind of a rebate. So the more they bring in up to a certain cap, they get money back on it. The rest of these pieces, though, the events for 2021, those top three, we're building business for next year. Event displays and the new market advertising, of course, working to build out that flight. Hopefully, when that launches in June, we are past this, but no guarantees there. The one upside to anything that we do here is they don't have expiration dates. But if we determine they're something that we can't use the funds for, it doesn't make any good sense to engage in the marketing activities. We retire, we retire the projects, put the money back into reserves, and then we'll come back with a different request at a later date. Our hope in knowing this, after this crisis came up and we'd already put this plan together, is to be at the ready to build business back. We're gonna be, I think, at the tip of the spear in regards to a number of the business recovery endeavors. But rather than scrambling, working to put some things into place, we need to be ready to actually take action on them. So when we look at the Omni channel experience, for instance, we don't have to implement all that at once, but I think the visitor app could be one of those things that if we get people into our community, you can build ale trails and wine trails and gamification to get visitors to spend more money while they're here. So it does give us a great opportunity to do some business recovery while they're here. Trade shows for the ones that we missed some this year, some things canceled. And we pulled staff out of, right when this started, out of the Seattle show. But those trade show floors are built with a lot of flash. And it's kind of like the blue light especially at Kmart. If you're my generation, we need to attract attention, get people there. And some of this is gonna be through virtual experiences. But Councilmember Maloney, did that answer your question?
I think so. So what I, the key points that I heard from this, and I just trying to pull out a couple nuggets there because of course you have so much information. I know you are very thoughtful about these things, so please don't think that I'm trying to do some major second guessing of your business. But what I think I pulled out of there was that you intended remain flexible. And if something, and that you and the advisory board and such will not spend this money necessarily if it doesn't make sense to you. And then the other thing I heard was that a lot of this stuff is, ends up being infrastructure, long-term planning that can be used when appropriate, even if it's not, even if there's some, some number of months where it's still not effective. Is that, is that a good summary of some of the things I heard?
That was an amazing summary. And if you're ever looking for a position as a marketer, come talk to me.
I appreciate that.
No, it was, you're spot, you are spot on.
I, anyways, I, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Okay, well, with that said, thank you very much, Michael, for sharing that with us. Look forward to moving on forward and appreciate what you guys do for the Tri-Cities and what you do for Pasco. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we appreciate the partnership. Thank you for the time, all.
All right. Okay. With that, we'll move right along to 4C. And SG Land Management LLC Harris Road Annexation. Mr. White, do you have a report for us tonight?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and thank you, council. We don't do a lot of annexation requests. And the ones we've done recently have been municipal-sponsored annexations. So they've been very straightforward, very easy to accomplish. This particular annexation request comes to you through something called the Petition Method of Annexation. So that in itself is kind of a warning. It has about 45 procedural steps involved with it. The first thing, though, I just want to point out that the property that it involves is the the Harris Farm property, and if council recalls, it was auctioned at a public auction, maybe roughly the middle of November of 2019. It was purchased by a local owner, and as of the end of January of this year, that owner submitted something called an intent to petition to annex. And what that does is it sets, one of the procedural steps for council is a decision on whether to accept the annexation or not to accept the annexation. Now typically, council would accept the annexation. We would ask the petitioner, the owner in this case, to make contact with the other property owners in the county area to see if they would be interested in joining, and they would normally return a petition to annex with or without some of the owner's signatures, and we would go on our way and accomplish an annexation. In this case, the property is a bit unique. Staff is recommending that council do not accept the annexation and instead wait until the comprehensive plan is adopted this coming late summer. And the reason for that is twofold. First of all, the Broadmoor Master Plan that's being developed and the City of Pasco Comprehensive Plan that's also being developed, and then the owner's own intentions for the property are for a much higher density than the underlying existing comprehensive plan calls for. Since this property doesn't have utilities and has a number of development challenges regarding regulations and utilities, we're requesting that we process the annexation and a development agreement which specifies the conditions that which utilities will be extended once we have the underlying comprehensive plan density standards in place. And if you look in your packet, you'll see that one of the, one of the exhibits is a map that shows the proposed comprehensive land use plan, and it identifies this area in the darker brown color versus the yellow color. That's medium density designation. And the applicant and owner of this area has indicated that their intent is to pretty much develop the property as what you can see right across the river in Richland, roughly multifamily, higher-end units at approximately anywhere from eight to 12 to 14 units an acre. So the existing comprehensive plan designation does not allow that to happen, and the proposed comprehensive plan and the Broadmoor Plan do. So it's a coordinated effort, but if we time it right and work closely with the developer, we think we can accommodate that right about the September adoption date of our comprehensive plan.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, this is Federal.
Go ahead, Councilman Maloney.
Thank you. Mr. White, how, how does this, utilities for this plan out, given the LID that we're currently talking about sewer? Are those related at all?
Well, sewer, no, this property is not included in the LID for sewer service, although the trunk line is on the eastern side of the property, which makes sewer available to this property.
So because the sewer is already available, they would not, they would be, need to be part of that, they can develop their own sewer and hook directly into the trunk line that, that has already been built?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Maloney and, and council, you may notice that the slide on the screen tonight shows the property that was purchased by the owner. There is county property, excuse me, on both the east and the west side of the property that has not include, has not signed or submitted an intent to petition to annex. So as we look forward to coordinating the annexation and the development agreement, it's intended that these two properties that have not indicated an interest in annexation be included in a future development agreement. So there's a little bit of footwork to do to make sure that this transpires in a coordinated fashion.
Okay.
This is Councilman Serrano.
Go ahead, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Mr. White, so the plan you laid out was to kind of essentially let this fall and work towards the comprehensive plan. Has that been communicated to the developers? And if so, how have they received that?
The, well, discussions have, have been had with the developer on at least several occasions. The actual formal agenda report was transmitted to the developer, the link to it anyway, this past Friday, and I have not yet heard from the developer. And keep in mind that council will help, council, council must hold a public meeting next Monday to decide on the question of whether to accept the annexation or not.
Okay. If there's any way we can chase down their sentiment prior to Monday, that'd be helpful.
I'm sorry, Councilman Serrano. I didn't hear the last portion of your statement.
Sorry about that. If there's any way we can chase down the developer and kind of get their feelings on this alternative approach, that'd be helpful prior to Monday.
Certainly.
Yes, because it's
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Yeah, because it sounds to me like, is this going to hold back? I mean, obviously, these developers have a lot of money tied in
Yeah.
to the property and are trying to move things forward. And so that's why I can understand and comprehend Mr. Serrano's comments. But yeah, I'd be interested to know what the developer is and how we can work together so that he don't, I'm only, I'm only imagining that he wants to get this done as soon as possible, or maybe that he thinks this is an expedited process?
No, no, he does not. The, the bottom line is, we cannot enter into a development agreement contrary to our comprehensive plan. So it, it doesn't, it's another step in the process of coordination, but it doesn't delay the product any. We still were going to have to wait until we had a higher density land use designation for the developers' plans to be realized.
Okay. So how involved, how involved is the developer with this process? I mean, I mean, he, he submitted the petition for annexation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so I guess I'm just, I just would like to hear, I guess that's what the hearing is for, correct? So we can hear his comments and
The public meeting, yes.
Okay. So, so next week, we'll, we'll open up a hearing for, for this.
It's, it's not actually hearing. It's, it's just simply a public meeting, but certainly there's an opportunity for comment if that's appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that that's been one of the things that we've, I've been concerned with, with people having, you know, all this investment tied up and, and, you know, right now, I just want to be careful because of the environment and circumstances we're in, but, but also to take into account their, their investment and see how quickly we can move forward on whatever it is we have to do to get this going. But, but anyway, that, those were my comments. Any other comments from council?
Yeah, this is Serrano again, and I'll just second what you said, Mr. Mayor. I think the questions I were asked, I was asking, were kind of along that line, just making sure that, you know, our developing community are kind of aligned with our approaches as far as their timing and realizing things, and not necessarily in expedited, but a timely fashion.
Okay.
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Just real quick, Mr. White, you said something earlier just a second ago that I was trying to process through and understand. I think you said, we cannot enter a development agreement without, with, with, for an agreement that, or for a development that's in, that's not, that does not match our comprehensive plan. So the implication of that, I, if, am I understanding that correctly to understand that, because our current comp plan does not allow the development that they want, until we change the comp plan in some fashion, we, we can't move forward with what they want to plan?
That's correct, yes. The underlying comprehensive plan designation is low-density residential, which has a two to five unit range of dwelling units per acre, and they intend to have a much, much higher density when the, when the project's said and done, yes. Or it, we've even discussed actually kind of a phased approach to the entire site, where some of it is higher density and maybe other portions of the site aren't quite as high of a density. But yes, that's, essentially, that's true, Mr. Maloney.
So, Mr. White, is, at this point in time, I understand, I certainly don't want, not suggesting we exercise staff, but I'm also sensitive to both what Mr. Serrano and, and Mayor Martinez have indicated, that we want to make sure we move forward quickly. And I know our comp plan's right around the corner, if good luck and hard work is, is proven out well. But is there any way of changing our current comp plan in a timely fashion, or is that just simply not worth it and not timely?
No, what, again, state law limits our comp plans amendments to once yearly, and if we change it for this, then we're on the hook for a 2021 amendment for our major revision, which we don't want to, which we don't want to let that happen.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure I understood the, the, the full implications from what you said there, and I, I thank you for, for fleshing that out better for me.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, this is Serrano again. Is, so is there no other way to change the zoning outside of the comp plan, plan that we could approach this? I'm just thinking, if this was submitted in, looks like late January, we're talking about adopting the comp plan hopefully in September. That's an eight-month of sitting on an investment.
And, and the question was, can we accommodate zoning contrary to the comprehensive plan?
Correct. Is there an alternative method?
There is not, Mr. Serrano, and that was one of the points that our legal counsel, Mr. Ferguson, and one of his land use attorneys conferred on this past month, and they've indicated that's not the, that, that cannot happen.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, Mr. White, and we'll look forward to bringing it up for comments on the next meeting.
Yes.
And go from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you for that, staff. Moving right along to item number five, miscellaneous council discussion. Does anybody have anything they would like to share before, as we're ending the meeting?
Yeah.
Mr. Mill?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I had a constituent send me an email basically asking that, telling me that their rental property was scheduled for an inspection by June 30th. Is the city doing anything? I mean, she was saying that, you know, as far as they felt it was, are irresponsible to have inspectors going in people's homes and something for the resident. Are we changing that, or what is your thought on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mill, we are temporarily suspending rental inspections and certain building inspections unless the protocol can be followed for social distancing. But, but yes, that's correct. We're temporarily suspending rental license inspections.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mill. Give one more chance to those out at home. If there's no other comments, I guess, let's see, we'll move, I do have just one thing I want to say, and I wanted to mention two things. And the first one is, as community members, there, there's a, there's a place on the, the website where you can send a comment to the council and, and provide comments and, and issues that you want to address. But I'm going to ask, before the community does that, to, to double check your resources and where you're getting your information from, because when we get a comment from the community with an issue that they would like to be resolved, and we go to research it, and it turns out that it's not quite the way it was explained to us, it really takes up a lot of time and resources from our staff in these, in this, in this real busy time that we have. So I'm just going to ask the community to, to obviously bring up the issues. That's what we're here to do. We're here to help. But, but prior to making any, any accusations, do your homework, and let's make sure that we're getting accurate information so that we're not spinning our wheels just basically investigating, if you would, please. The second comment that I would like to make is, I would like to just give a shout out to our community for those who are helping support our, our small businesses in, in the Tri-Cities, our local businesses. There's a lot of restaurants, and that was one of the first issues that came up when all this happened, is, hey, we need to come out and, and advertise to ensure that, you know, we can get, that we're advertising, that we're doing takeout for our restaurants. I want to thank the community for stepping up and supporting. I've seen a lot of things on Facebook where you're basically supporting local businesses, getting their takeout, going through drive-throughs, and helping them get through this rough time, because, you know, we, we worked so hard to get them here, and they've worked so hard to get to where they're at. And I just wanted to give it a shout out to the community to, for those who are helping our small businesses stay alive during these hard times. So thank you very much for that. Let's continue to support them and continue to, to move forward and, and show the, the community that we can be. So I appreciate that very much. Any, anybody else?
I just wanted to
I'll take a quick comment, if that's okay. Alvaro, Ruben?
Go ahead, Ruben.
Yeah, I also wanted to give a shout out to the school district. They've made some lunches available for kids at various locations. And so today, I was fortunate to be able to escort some kids and put some access for kids to exercise social distancing. And so definitely it's good to see that there's kids who are not going hungry, and there's not only in the public sector through the school district, but also there's some businesses that have also offered to have kids eat for free or things of that nature. So definitely wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Appreciate that comment. Yes.
And I just wanted to mention that next Monday is a fifth Monday, so there is no scheduled meeting, and the next meeting would be April 6.
Okay. Well, thank you for telling us that. All right. Well, with that, we'll, is there any other, give one last chance for a council member? Okay, if not, then is there a need for an executive session tonight?
No, there is not, and we'll do a written report on our COVID-19 activities and get that to council next week.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. And with that, no executive session, we are adjourned. Thank you.